Good evening and welcome to our candidate forum for the Richardson ISD Board of Trustees election. Now, to introduce the candidates in ballot order. Place six, ballot position one, Mr. Justin Bono. There he is. Okay, place six, ballot position two, Ms. Rachel Chumney. Place seven, ballot position one, Dr. Kristen Kuhn. Place seven, ballot position two, Dr. Judy Yarborough. And place seven, ballot position three, Mrs. Bonnie Abidi. Okay, candidates will have one and a half minutes to answer each questions. Are you ready? Everybody says, "Oh, yes, we're so excited." Okay. We'll give you an easy one to open up. Okay, the first question will go to Mr. Bono. I have to get all my little list here. Okay. And then each one of you will answer thereafter. If you need it repeated, you can ask me and I can repeat the question. Okay. Where do you live and where do or did your children go to school? Mr. Bono.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you Lynette and Ellen and Liz and your team for organizing this evening and thank you for so many of you for showing up. I currently reside in Lake Highlands area of Dallas. We live on Arbor Trail Drive in the Moss Haven Elementary School zone. I have a daughter Molly who's here tonight on a third grade civics field trip and she's a third grader at Moss Haven and then we have our younger daughter Sadie who is five years old. She's in the PPCD program at Lake Highlands Elementary and will join her big sister at Moss Haven next year.
Thank you. Ms. Chumney?
Thank you all for being here tonight. So excited to be here and it's a great crowd and we really appreciate you coming out to hear what we have to say. I have three children that are here tonight. They are in first, third, and fifth grade at Prairie Creek Elementary and we live in Richardson. And before attending Prairie Creek, they had one child that attended Jess Harbin for one and a half years. And before that, he attended Dartmouth, the small talk program for speech therapy. And I guess that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Kuhn?
I'd like to extend my thanks to the league and to the council of PTA's for hosting this event and thank all of y'all for coming out tonight and to learn a little bit about the candidates. Really appreciate your interest in the election. I live in the city of Richardson. My children went to Mohawk and they currently go to North Junior High and Pierce High School. They're here tonight. They told me they had homework and they weren't coming, but they're here after all. So I appreciate you guys coming. Thanks, y'all. And let's see, I grew up in the North Dallas area. I went to Spring Creek, Westwood, and Richardson High School, so I'm also a product of RISD. Glad to be here tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Yarborough?
Yes, and I, along with everybody else, I'm grateful that y'all are here tonight, that you care enough to come and hear what we believe. I have, I live in the Dallas area, in the Lake Highlands area also. I'm in the Moss Haven area as well. We have four children who have gone through the district. Our oldest daughter went to Lake Highlands Elementary for kindergarten year and then we moved for five years and when we came back, we moved. And I will say, we knew we wanted to come to the Lake Highlands area. We didn't care where it was, just so everybody had a bedroom. But we ended up at Moss Haven and Jennifer finished her sixth through 12 years and then our other two were four through 12 and two through 12. And then our youngest went K through 12.
Great, thank you. Ms. Abidi?
We live in the Richland Park, Southern Park, Richland College. My children went to kindergarten and first grade. My eldest went to kindergarten and first grade at Richland Elementary. And then he went to MST Elementary for a while now, three years. I just need to hold it up like this. There we go. For three years, my eldest was homeschooled and we were out of the district, but then this past year, he has come back into the district. He is at RHS in the Culinary Arts Program. And then my eighth grader was out of the district for two years, but he is back in for the past two years and he is at West and will go into RHS next year.
Thank you. I've been handed a little announcement. We have present from the city of Richardson, city council members. Councilman Steve Mitchell, should you raise your hand or say hi? And Councilman Chris Oliver. It's Chris, we're back here, okay? And our former mayor, Gary Slagel, is also present. Do you stand up and so we can say hi? We're glad that you're here. Okay, question number two. This question, we will begin with Dr. Yarborough. Okay. Advocacy is a big part of serving as a board trustee. How have you engaged in education-related advocacy in the past? What do you feel are the key legislative issues? I'll start with Dr. Yarborough.
I have not been at a level of legislative advocacy. My main place for advocating has been in the public school and the local school. I continue to be involved as a mentor and what I, I guess one of my big advicacies is that every child, no matter the color of their skin, the language they speak, would find a good education and would find a way to go through the school and come out ready to either go to college or to an occupation.
Thank you. Ms. Abidi?
I first started my advocacy when my son was in third grade, fourth grade, and started a parent support group called Richardson Gifted. It's a support group for parents of gifted children. And through efforts over the years, have worked really hard on bringing up the level of education in the gen ed classroom. I have also been at the state level, served on the Parent Division Board for Texas Association of Gifted and Talented. And I have also was elected to the Gifted and Talented Focus Group. And I know you're all going, "Well, all you do is gifted and talented, right?" Well, no. I'm a member of the Sage Committee, which is special and gifted education for the council of PTAs. And I believe that we should bring different strategies into the gen ed classroom. You are seeing some of those with the differentiated instruction. And I'd like to say I was instrumental in helping to get some of that in there. And then recently, I have been meeting with our, well, my legislative representatives for Stephanie Carter and Linda Coop and then also found out that George Clayton lives in my neighborhood, so I've been giving them a piece of my mind as well on education issues.
Thank you. Dr. Kuhn?
Most recently, I have participated on an education roundtable for Angie Chin Button as representative from the League of Women Voters. So I've been engaged directly in education policy. I think another way that I have made a contribution to our legislative agenda is through the research that I've done. I'm the director of research for an organization called Educate Texas. Before that, I did my graduate work at UT Dallas. And my area of focus there was on pre-kindergarten. That work was published by the National Bureau of Education Research and it's actually used to inform national and state policy about universal pre-K programs today. The analysis that I do right now for Educate Texas also informs our state legislative agenda as it comes to early college, high school, and T-STEM and the impact that those programs have had across the state as well. So I think the work that I've done speaks for itself as to how I can provide evidence to inform policy and impact. I'll be able to bring that to the Board of Trustees and be an effective advocate for our students to make sure that we have the resources that we need to accomplish the goals that we set out for the district.
Thank you. Ms. Chumney?
Well, first and foremost, I am a public school advocate. We made our decision to move to Richardson and to put our children through public schools before we even had children. We selected Richardson because of the excellent reputation from upstate New York and I hope to preserve the legacy of RISD in this position. I am an advocate for my own children and hope to be an advocate for all of our students. Specifically, I've been involved as a special needs and dyslexic advocate. I've been to Austin and have testified before the State Board of Education. I've been a parent member of the Dyslexia Handbook Committee, one of the probably first ever parent members to be able to provide input into the handbook, which is currently being revised. I think that our testimony is going to make a huge impact on our students. So I look forward to advocating for public schools, for RISD, for my children, for all of our children. And I will advocate for all of our children, just like they're my own. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bono?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think it's important to understand my background a little bit in relation to this question. I'm actually the child of two public educators in the state of Texas who served kids here in this state and have retired after 57 years of combined service. So I literally grew up with public education at the dinner table and have been engaged in the discussion around public education since, for as long as I can remember. So as a result, I've been engaged as an advocate, as a citizen even before I had children, as a father, and also through my board position on a group called the Exchange Club of Lake Highlands. Just this last year, four or five of us were honored on the House floor by Representative Jason Viabba for not only our advocacy for our schools and support of our schools and RISD, but our other community endeavors as well. And during that time, was able to meet one-on-one with Representative Viabba, Representative Kenneth Sheets, and Senator John Corona, all three of which have endorsed my campaign. So continue to stay engaged with our legislative leaders at the state level and look forward to utilizing those relationships for the benefit of RISD through my service on the board. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, question number three. Mr. Bono, this is coming right back at you. Okay, question three. Should the district allocate more funding and/or time to training teachers in the effective use of technology in the classroom? Why or why not?
Yes, I certainly support that. I, through my service on the board, I hope to support policies that not only provide more training for education, but more support for our teachers in the classroom. We ask a tremendous amount of our campus educators and administrators and we need to do whatever we can to ensure that they have all the support, all the support that they can, that they can get. You know, from a technology standpoint, technology is great. It's certainly the future of education, but we need to make sure that we're doing more than just dropping laptops and tablets in our schools. We need to make sure that they are coming with appropriate training and appropriate instructional strategies so that our teachers can be most effective when they get them in their hands. So I will definitely support policies that provide as much training and support as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Chumney?
In theory, I, yes, of course, I have heard stories of teachers saying that they have been trained for, spent half-days learning how to operate an iPad. So I think we need to be very cautious about how much time we're taking from our teachers to train them on things that they might already know how to do. So we need to take our training very seriously. We want to utilize our teachers' times in the most effective way. And if they are, feel like they are already competent at something, then we need to find another area that they feel like they need some training in. So, but yes, in theory, I think that I would, I would support this. Technology is a huge component of how we educate our children now. And so if ever we implement a new program or, you know, a new part of technology that a teacher is not familiar with, then I would definitely support giving them the adequate training.
Thank you. Ms. Abidi?
Well, I think technology is here to stay. I have had the benefit of having my children do online learning and I believe that it is a great tool for us to use as parents, as teachers, in order to allow students to get the more differentiated instruction, to be able to learn at their own pace. And as Ms. Chumney said, well, we could probably save a lot of money if we got the kids to teach the teachers how to use the technology, right? I know sometimes I'm not that technologically savvy and my kids are like, "Just give me the phone, mother." But anyway, there is a great deal of, you know, I think learning, but it's, technology is getting easier to use. And so I do think we need to find out from the teachers, what do you need help with? And then give them support for what they do need and not give them training on something that they already know how to do, so.
Thank you. Dr. Kuhn?
Thank you. This is an area that I think holds tremendous promise in the education sector. And so, yes, I would fully support and I'm committed to supporting policies that help use technology in more effective ways in our classroom. I think technology, for the sake of technology, is not effective. We've seen plenty of school districts, Los Angeles, McAllen ISD, where they put a laptop or an iPad in every kid's hands and had no idea what to do with it. So I think we have to learn how to use it as an effective instructional strategy. But I can tell you that what I've seen in school districts like Capella ISD, they've got innovative programs in place right now where they're trying to figure out how to use it. And they have got students that are more highly engaged in their learning because they're controlling the pace of their learning and they've got teachers being used in their classrooms to their highest and best use. Because when a student is engaged in their own instruction at their own pace, then the teacher can be used in a more effective way to dock in where the student needs them. I think that we've seen that also in a pretty exciting pilot that we've had going on. Both my kids are in flipped classrooms for math this year and I've had a chance to talk to their teachers about those experiences and I think the teachers find that to be really positive. So absolutely, I would support policies that give our teachers the training and the professional development that they need to use it as an effective instructional strategy in their classroom.
Thank you. And Dr. Yarborough?
I would agree with all of my fellow board, whatever we are, thank you, candidates. Because I do believe that we are in a world that cannot operate without technology. And because of the fact that we're beginning to get more and more technology into the classrooms, there are more opportunities for creative learning. But if you have a teacher who does not have the skills that he or she needs in order to teach using technology, I think it will, it will, our classrooms will suffer rather than benefit from technology. So I definitely would agree with the funding and I was very happy to see, as I've been looking at the Vision 2020 Plan, that that's a very important part of what the district is doing and working toward.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to question four and Dr. Kuhn, you will take this first. Okay. Since all of you are new to the position you are seeking, I have a two-part question. One, give us your interpretation of the Board of Trustees, its member and how it functions. And two, what is your perception of the role of the board in running or leading RISD for the next three years? Okay, Dr. Kuhn?
It's the role of the board to set policy, to set mission, to set vision, to dream big for our students and to make sure that they are stewards of the public trust and that they represent the community's interests for how they want their students educated. I see that that is the most important role that I would play as a trustee, even as a new trustee, learning some of the ropes from the folks that are currently on the board. It's important that we have policies in place that help us reach those goals. I have been a member of the District Planning Committee and so I've been able to see how tightly the district works to align the vision, mission, and goals with the district plan and with each campus plan. And I would think that as a board member, we would want to continue to hold campuses and districts accountable for accomplishing those goals. And I would see that as a hallmark of a high-performing district is that they are so focused on continuous improvement and I would want to make sure that those type of policies continue during my service on the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Dr. Yarborough?
I understand the role of the board and board members to be that as a board corporate, a body corporate who works together to do what Dr. Kuhn just was talking about, to set policies and also to, I think govern may be too strong a word, but maybe not, but to oversee Dr. Wagner at this point, the superintendent, and to make sure that she helps us reach the goals that we have as a district. And I, this, I'm new to all of this. And so I found it very exciting to read about it, to learn about it, and I'm excited to be a board member who can be making these decisions and helping add a vision to what we're already trying to do here in the district.
Thank you. Ms. Abidi?
I'm forgetting to hold this up so y'all can hear me. The role of the board is to work together as a team to lead the district, as everybody has said, with the Vision 2020. And I think that, I have several different hats that I wear. I'm a parent of children who are still in school. I'm a small business owner, so I know how to run a business and the district, let's face it, it's a big budget that needs to be managed properly. So I bring the small business leader into the role, or would bring it into the role on board. I also am a parent advocate and have been a parent advocate for the past several years. So I wear that hat as well. I also am sometimes an out-of-the-box thinker. My kids are very out-of-the-box thinkers. And so I think that brings a fresh approach to the board and to some of the things. I have lots of ideas of things that we can do and would like to try and bring some of those ideas to fruition.
Thank you. Ms. Chumney?
First of all, my interpretation of the way that our board works together is that they're a very cohesive group. I've attended the majority of the school board meetings and study sessions this past year and they work together very well and they're very collaborative and professional and seem to, you know, always have, be pretty much in agreement on most issues. As far as the role of a trustee or the Board of Trustees, of course, the number one role is that they are, they set the vision for the district. And in doing so, they hire and fire and supervise the superintendent and make sure that the superintendent is going towards that vision, that destination, and make sure that the superintendent stays on track. The trustees also set the tax rate and call elections and so, and manage the budget, major thing. So we oversee the budget, approve the budget. So I think that, I look forward to being a part of our Board of Trustees. I have a great vision for this district and probably the absolute best asset that I have and I can't wait to lend my vision to make RISD the best that it can possibly be.
Thank you. Mr. Bono?
I compare the Board of Trustees to, you know, a corporate Board of Directors. If you're familiar with that in the business world, you know that they're not in the weeds every day. They're responsible for setting the vision, the goals, and the policies for the company, hiring the right people to get the job done, and monitoring their progress and holding them accountable. That's, that's what the role of a trustee should be in RISD, not being in the weeds, but, but making sure that Superintendent, as the leader of the district, is accomplishing what we, what we asked her to accomplish each year and also striving for continuous improvement. I, again, come from the business world where I, I'm used to the theory of continuous improvement. If you're not always striving to move ahead, you're falling behind your competition and that's no different in our schools. You know, I'm, I'm used to operating at this level. I'm used to managing significant teams at a very high level and getting, getting the most out of our team, getting the most out of a team without, without getting in the weeds and without getting into the, to the details when it's not necessary. So we will certainly bring that to my service on the board and look forward to shaping that policy, setting that policy, and, and holding our Superintendent accountable for achieving it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, for question number five, they've thrown us a fun curve. We're going to do a lightning round. And it's a yes or a no and nothing else. So since Mr. Bono is supposed to start this round, just to keep it from getting confusing, I think what we'll do is we'll come straight down the row, yes, no, and then we'll go, start with Ms. Abidi and go back down because there's nine questions. Okay. Don't you love it? You get paid extra for this part, right?
There's some fun stuff in here?
Okay. You ready? Okay, yes or no? RISD is one of hundreds of Texas school districts currently suing the state over state funding of public schools. Do you support the school district's lawsuit? Yes or no?
Yes.
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 Oh, I think they've got it down. Okay. Here we go. Next one, starting with Ms. Abidi. Moving school boards and school bond elections to the November general election cycle would increase community participation in the school district. Do you support moving school elections to the fall? Yes or no?
So maybe?
No, yes or no?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I'll say no, not without further study.
Okay, thank you. All right, next one. Start, you know, with Mr. Bono. Okay, do you favor principals or other staff being armed with guns? Yes or no?
No.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Abidi. What is your opinion of the Home Rule Charter districts as being proposed for DISD? Are you in support? Yes or no? Everybody's looking at me. I, I'm just...
That's our opinion and then...
What is your opinion of the Home Rule Charter district as being proposed for RISD? Are you in support? Yes or no?
DISD.
I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you very, excuse me. Did I say RISD? Ooh, it's on a tape, too. That's terrible. All right, what's being proposed in DISD? Are you in support? Yes or no?
No.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, next question. Do you think creationism should...
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question. Do you think creationism should be taught in science classes? Yes or no? Mr. Bono, you start.
Yes.
No.
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 Okay. Ms. Abadie, can you... Yes, we're having trouble hearing you.
No.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay. All right, next round. It has been rumored that several of you are always late to events. Do you have a problem getting to events on time? Yes or no?
No.
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 Not a fair question. I can make it happen. Yes. No. I don't know.
No.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bono. Do you think special education takes away from our general education? Yes or no?
No.
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 Thank... Okay. All righty. This is sort of, there's three of them, so we'll just go one at a time. Are you in favor of home schools? Yes or no?
Homeschools or homeschooling?
Well, it says homeschool, but I'm sure they mean home... I just have to read the card. I'm sure they are in reference to homeschooling. Is that okay, Ellen? Okay. Are you in favor of homeschooling? Yes or no?
Since I've homeschooled, yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, are you in favor of charter schools? Mr. Bono?
No.
No.
And while the charter, yes. We can't read. It's on.
It depends on the charter, yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, the last one. Are you in favor of school vouchers? Yes or no?
Who's first?
I think, no, I think it goes back to me. It's not a cut-and-dry yes-or-no answer, so I'd have to say yes.
Under the right circumstances, yes.
No.
I'm for public education, no.
No.
Thank you. I think we all survived that one. Okay, question number six. Okay. We survived the lightning round. Yes. Or got singed, one of the two. I don't know which it was, but I think we made it. Okay, we're on to question number six, and we begin with Mrs. Abadie on this one. Okay. Okay, are you going to deal with the growing student and teacher burnout from the constant emphasis on testing?
Well, as a matter of fact, I had a meeting with Dr. Wagner this week on that very issue. I think there are ways that we can get around the stress that has been put on our teachers. I think we need to take the stress off of the teachers and off of the students. We have to take the tests. The federal government mandates that we have to take the tests. Federal government does not mandate that we have to teach to the test and study for the test and teach to the test and study for the test. And I think we need to make sure that the studying is relevant. My eighth grader took the science test this week, and he came home, and I said, "How did you do?" And he said, "Oh, my God, there was nothing that I studied that was on that test." So there again, what are we teaching? What are we studying? And I think that we need to really just concentrate on bringing the teaching back into the classroom and let the teachers have the freedom to teach the material and can't say the heck with the test, but, you know, we all want to say the heck with the test, right? But I think if we take the stress off of the students and the teachers, that more children will pass the test.
Thank you. Dr. Kewen?
Thanks. I will tell you that I am concerned about how standardized testing has narrowed teaching and learning in our classrooms. I think that there is nothing more important than having a good teacher in front of those students. A high-quality teacher makes all the difference to those students to make sure that they get a year's worth of growth. And I want to do everything we can to empower our teachers and their practice, to honor their profession, to make sure that they have the supports and the resources that they need to teach in their classrooms in order to actually differentiate instruction for students, get students engaged, try new hands-on learning activities, have opportunities to use the technology that we talked about before, and so that they don't get trapped in a very narrow way of teaching and learning to one specific test. And those are the type of policies that I would support as a trustee so that we can make sure that we're maximizing student engagement, that kids are excited about their learning, that we're inspiring them, and that we're using our teachers to their highest and best use in their classroom.
Thank you. Dr. Yarborough?
Although the standards have been lowered or alleviated a little bit in the past year by the legislature, I still believe that the standardized testing is here with us and so that we need to decide how are we going to work with our students, given that that is not going to go away anytime soon. And my belief is that we can reengage the community to come in and do what Dr. Kewen was talking about, freeing up our teachers in order to, for them to find their passion and creativity that took them into the workplace of a teacher in the first place. And I think there are lots of ways we could do that, and I'll talk about that later.
Thank you. Ms. Chumney?
I have three little voters in this... Well, they're not voters, but they're supporters. They will be voters one day, and they really want me to answer this question the right way, right? So they would like to see less emphasis on the STAR test. And I would like to see less emphasis on the STAR test, and I think our teachers would like to see less emphasis on STAR test. We want our children to have a meaningful education that is broad and that is engaging, that inspires them and helps them want to get out of bed every morning and go to school and be excited about it. And I feel like that our emphasis on the STAR test has really taken away that joy and that spark of excitement for teaching and for learning. And let's teach the test, excuse me, sorry, let's take the test and let's not talk about it the rest of the year. That's my opinion, and I think we're going to do just fine.
Thank you. Mr. Bono?
Yes, I would, I'd support policies as a trustee that would put less pressure downstream on administrators, downstream on teachers, and ultimately downstream to students relative to standardized testing. Clearly, standardized testing is a law, and we're going to follow that, but I think we have to constantly be vigilant in looking at how we do that in RISD and how we present that to our administrators and to our teachers. So clearly, I support a lot of the things the other candidates said relative to engaging students, challenging their creativity, giving them additional learning opportunities that help them think outside the box and engage them in their education beyond the textbook. So anything we can do to continue to advance those kind of policies and put less pressure on the test, I'm certainly in favor of. But, you know, this also goes to legislative advocacy, too, and, you know, we need leadership that continues to be able to engage on a state level and get our state leaders to sing that same song, so.
Thank you. Okay, question number seven. Mr. Bono, you'll take this one first. Have you seen the results of the recent dyslexia audit? And if so, how would you address the recommendations?
Yes, I have. I have attended the board meetings where not only the results of that audit, but the audit of the special education program and the gifted and talented programs were presented as well. And obviously, as a father of a gifted and talented student on one hand and a child with special needs on the other, I took keen interest in the results of those audits. Clearly, there were some recommendations that came out of that report that suggest that improvement is warranted in all three of those areas, and I think as a district, we have to tackle that to make sure that those programs are the best that they can be. Obviously, the superintendent is currently looking, and her staff are looking at the results of those audits, shaping solutions to address those recommendations, and as a board, we should hold them accountable to ensuring that they're implementing.
Thank you. Ms. Chumney?
Yes, I have seen the audit, and I believe we do have some room for improvement, although we have been making great strides. And I applaud the board for changing it up. We've changed our program. Now we have a multisensory program that's, I think, is going to be much more good, much more good. Sorry, y'all, I'm just not saying the right words tonight. It's going to be much better for our children. Perhaps I have dyslexia. Sometimes I have some language retention issues. But I think that we can always make changes, and we're going to push ahead with that. I want to see that our children are being evaluated if they have characteristics of dyslexia very early on. Studies show that 85% of kids in kindergarten can be identified as having dyslexia if they have it. So it's the time to start. They need to be, we don't need to be beating around the bush on this and identifying children in third and fourth grade. If they're showing characteristics of dyslexia, if they have a family history, we need to be identifying in kindergarten, first grade, or mediating and getting these kids where they're reading very well by the time they're in third grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kewen?
Thanks. I have had a chance to review the audit findings, and I think that they pointed towards some needs for some resources that need to be allocated to provide those services. I've also talked to the director of the program about this. I think it's important that we make sure that we have early identification. It's well-understood that learning is a cumulative process, and so the sooner that we can get kids into the services that they need and meet them where they are, the farther along we can keep them on their learning curve. And so I would support policies and resources being allocated to that program so that we can make sure that it's staffed appropriately, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students. I think that while there's still work to do to support that program, I was encouraged by the way they put together a parent reflection committee to help guide which programs were going to be put in place. And I would support policies that get parents involved in helping us understand... And I think audits are a real healthy way of self-reflecting on what we're doing in our district, and as a trustee, I would support policies that we have periodic reviews of all of our programs to make sure that we stay on a path of continuous improvement and that our district is functioning at the highest level.
Thank you. Dr. Yarborough?
I have not had a chance to look at the dyslexia audit, although I will say, as a parent of a child with dyslexia, and it was, she was in the sixth grade when they finally decided that's what was going on with her, I would certainly continue to support the district in moving ahead in whatever way they can to help parents and teachers identify the problem of dyslexia earlier in a child's school career.
Thank you. Ms. Abadie?
I don't know how I missed that audit. I have not seen the audit results either, but I know of a lot of the issues with dyslexia. I have several friends that have children with dyslexia, and through my work on the Special and Gifted Education Committee, I have learned a great deal about dyslexia. And I think it is important because no one knows these kids like their parents. They are the ones who know something's wrong, and they are the best advocates for their children, and I think we need to listen to our parents. And I think the, you know, teachers need to realize, you know, if something is, and have that communication with the parents so that teachers and students and parents can all work together to better educate that child and get that child the resources needed to help them with their education. And I, you know, hope that if I do get elected to the board, that I can continue to serve on the SAGE Committee because it is a plethora of information, and the parents are so knowledgeable, and I think we really have to listen to our parents.
Thank you. Okay, question number eight. Dr. Yarborough, you will lead on this one. Okay, parents are concerned that they are not allowed visitation in special ed, general ed, and PPCD classrooms, and that RISD has inconsistent practices across the district. The district is proposing 15 additional educational diagnosticians to address this. Are you in support?
Yes, I would be. I'm not exactly sure what all the, what all the different issues are around this, but I think anyway that the district can support parents and help them feel comfortable that their children are being well taken care of and that their education is being well taken care of. I would support that.
Thank you. Ms. Abadie?
Well, I have subbed in the district. Oh, I'm subbing now still. And one of my favorite classes and favorite classes to accept is the special ed classroom. I actually had the chance last week to sub at the high school at Barkner in the developmental class, and I had a lot of the same kids that were there when I subbed as a long-term sub at Mark Twain. There are so many different levels of learning when you are teaching in special ed, and I think we need to bring the community, the parents, anybody, businesses, whoever will volunteer in the classroom, we need to allow them into the classroom to help. It will bring so much reward to the community members and the parents who are volunteering. These are very special students in our district, and I just think that we really need to support those teachers. It's very hard. You've got varying levels. I taught in a behavior class. I had six kids, and all six kids were on a different learning level. So we have to have that support from parents and the community and more teachers, of course.
Thank you. And Dr. Kewen?
I think parents are absolutely partners in their students' education with the public school system, and I am not familiar with the question addresses as far as not allowing parents to visit those particular classrooms. That would need more study on my part to understand what that practice is and why that's in place. If it's meeting the academic needs of the student, then that's something that I need to learn about. But we absolutely want to have policies where parents are in our public schools. The schools belong to the community that they live, the schools belong to the people within those communities, and we want to make sure that they feel welcome at all times and that they know what's going on in their students' educational experiences. And so if that helps us to have parents as partners in those classrooms and community members as partners in those classrooms, we want to do what we can to make those welcoming environments to parents as well because that kind of collaboration is going to help students reach their highest potential.
Thank you. Ms. Chumney?
The board policy on this is that third-party visitors to the schools can be allowed in at the principal's discretion. And we, of course, value our parents and want parents to be engaged. It's at the top of our priority list, yet for some reason, our parents are not being allowed... being allowed into our PPCD classrooms, and sometimes they're not being allowed into the general classrooms. And there seems to be a, a difference in practice and policy. And I'm on the Special Education Advisory Committee, and this is a discussion that we've had many times. Parents are very concerned about it. They send their kids to school. They trust RISD with their children for seven hours a day, and there's children that have severe disabilities and the parents are not allowed to go into the classroom. And where we understand how this can be in some ways disruptive for the classroom, I think that under certain circumstances, it should be allowed. And this is not something that we have yet gotten resolved or gotten a clear answer on, and I hope that it can, because we want parents to be welcome in our school. They deserve to be in our schools and engage with their children's learning environments. And I'm not sure how the diagnosticians is going to fix this problem of policy versus practice, but maybe, maybe they're listening really cool and special about that. I don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Bono?
I certainly will support policies that increase parental involvement and parental engagement in our schools. I, and also, as it relates to the diagnosticians, I mean, that goes back to what I answered in three or four questions ago, relative to providing more resources to our teachers so that they can have more face-to-face interaction and directly impact their kids. So I'm thankful that the board is considering those additional allocations for the upcoming year. I think that'll make a big impact in our, in, in our special education program specifically. And I'm excited that, you know, we're moving in the right direction relative to providing those additional resources for teachers.
Great, thank you. Okay, this will be our last question before we move on to closing statements, and I believe we go back to Mr. Bono to take this question. It's three, three parts. So first, why is being on the board worth your time? How will your investment impact the RISD this coming term and in ten years from now? And last, what is your vision in addition to and/or after Vision 2020?
Well, first, again, I think it's important to remember where I came from. Again, the son of two public educators, and I've been passionate about public education for as long as I can remember. I don't believe that there's any more important cause that we can support than our schools. My family and I have always been, felt that community service and giving back to our community is, is important. Ever since we, my wife and I have been married, we've, we've made it a point to stay engaged in our, in our community. It's, you know, effectively part of our, part of our family mission statement, if you will. So, you know, as, as years have gone, gone on, I've felt that board service was where I wanted to serve, and obviously, it's a significant time commitment, so I'm, I'm thankful to my wife and my family that we were able to sit down and decide that, you know, we'll consolidate our, our, our community service in, in this way and serve the board. I bring a background in business, and I have a degree in accounting and a degree in finance. I have children in school. I have a child in a gifted, gifted and talented program. I have a child in a special education program. So I think I bring an interesting perspective to the board that will, that will add value. And I'm sorry, I didn't have time for part three. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Chumney?
I can't think of any other way. I'd rather spend my time when I'm not being a mom and a wife than, than serving RISD. I'm a professional volunteer. It's what I do. I, from the minute that I wake up till the minute I pick my kids up from school, I'm volunteering, and this is the absolute truth, every single day, for RISD, for our children, for our, our parents. And I feel like I'm making an impact right now without being a trustee. And I, the impact will be measurable for anybody that's serving and, and, who is a principled leader and, and really has the interest of our school district and all of our students at heart. We're going to have students that are getting a meaningful education, the best education that they could possibly receive. We're going to have taxpayers that are very happy that their, their investments are, are going up, and, and a city that is, is, that is very dependent on the, on the status of its schools. And my vision for RISD is just that we, we provide our children a meaningful education, that our teachers and our kids love coming to school every day, and that we return these children out to the world one day as excellent citizens that are prepared for their college or career paths, and they're going to make a huge difference in our world.
Thank you. Ms. Abidi?
Turn my microphone on. Last year, I guess, two Decembers ago, I was at the Texas Association of Gifted and Talented Conference, and I met a lady who was a parent and was also a Board of Trustee for Grapevine-Cauliville. And then my friend, another one of my friends was trustee for the Capella ISD. And I asked them, I said, "So why did you run for school board?" And they said, "Well, we were not getting the results that we wanted as a parent advocate." And I felt like I could so relate to that. I've been a parent advocate, mostly for gifted and special needs, but you've got to understand that teachers need training so that they can bring those strategies into the classroom and so that every student can benefit from those strategies. I think it's important that we bring that, and that's part of what we're going to be doing and part of what I see us doing for the future beyond 2020.
Thank you. Dr. Kewin?
Thank you. This community is my home. I grew up here. It's given so much to my family, and it's important to me that the public schools in our community stay strong, as it is to all of you, because you wouldn't be here tonight otherwise. And I'll tell you that in my work, I've seen that public schools are really important lever in economics and keeping our communities vibrant, and I want to make sure that that continues for our community. And so that's why it's worth my time to do this work. To the extent that I have knowledge and expertise from my personal and professional experiences that I can bring back to this school district to help us grow and succeed and accomplish our goals as a community, I was willing to step up to that service because I believe that it's important to keep our schools strong. I work with school districts all over the state, talking to teachers, students, administrators, parents, trying to figure out how to make our schools more effective. And I think that I can bring that knowledge and expertise. I know I can bring that knowledge and expertise back to Richardson ISD to help us accomplish our goal and make us continue to grow in excellence and maintain the reputation that RISD has had for excellent public schools in the years to come. My vision is to continue to dream brig for our district and to make sure that we continue on that path of excellence so that when we're talking about Vision 3030, we are known and we are distinctive in the state for the quality of service that our school district provides.
Thank you. Dr. Yarborough?
Would you please repeat the third part of that question?
The first part?
Third.
Oh, the third part. What is your vision in addition to and/or after Vision 2020?
Coming to the realization that being a board member is worth my time has been an evolving thing for me as I've gone through this campaign. And a lot of that is because I have a renewed sense that as a member of the community, my job, my responsibility to the school district did not end when my last child graduated in 2007. And so, yes, I believe it is worth my time. I think it will be a growth opportunity for me as I serve on the board, but also a place that I can offer my educational experience. And my investment now, in, in ten years, I, I think investing myself in this particular time when our demographic is changing and we are who we are as a, as a district, that I need to invest my time to use what I can do to help us make that a more, make it a better experience. And in ten years, I hope that that would have come to the point that we would be living together in a, in a demographic that is the way the world is going.
Thank you. Our time for questions has expired. Closing statements will be made in reverse ballot order. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. We will begin with place seven, Mrs. Abidi.
Like Mr. Bono, my father was a, an educator in Louisiana. He taught history at the college level. He was educating the educators. He taught Louisiana history, Western civilization, and on occasion, American history. He didn't think it was quite as colorful as Western Civ, you know, Huey P. Long in Louisiana. I can remember him advocating for me as a college history professor. Education was important to him. I got grounded for Cs. That's how much of a stickler he was. I took a history test and made a C on it and was scared to death to show it to my dad. By the time my dad looked at it, took it up to the school and to the teacher, and that C was really an A. In fourth grade, y'all are going to laugh, this is kind of, you younger people won't understand this, but in reading class, I came home, started coming home with mimeograph papers, worksheets. Yeah, that nice lovely smell of the mimeograph copy machine. My dad asked my reading teacher, "Why are we getting worksheets home?" She said, "Well, we've finished the book." He's like, "Well, start another one." Good grief. So those are my earliest recollections of my father, you know, trying to advocate for my education. And I see myself doing that for my children's education and for the education of all students in the district. I wear several different hats. I'm a small business owner. I'm very involved in the community. I represent our martial arts school, North Dallas Martial Arts, with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm very actively involved in the Chamber of Commerce. In fact, before I was here, I was at Chamber Richardson Young Professionals Group. I'm a parent advocate, and I am a parent of children in the RISD. So I hope that you will consider voting for me starting next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Yarborough?
At the risk of repeating myself, I, the theme of my campaign has become re-engaging the community of those who no longer have children in school. I've come to realize my responsibility, as I said a moment ago, and I feel like we have treasures in the community who think it's no longer their responsibility. They think there's no longer anything that they can offer experience-wise, and I would like to see that be, that that would change. I'm hoping that people, retirees, people like myself who no longer have children, singles, would be willing to look for ways that they can offer back to the schools. Perhaps that would be like joining the PTA, being, going to the meetings, listening to the needs of the parents and the teachers and the students, or perhaps mentoring a young child who has trouble with their reading or their math homework, or an older child who is making career choices, and, and maybe the life experience of the one who mentors him or her would, would be valuable. Also, young parents who are inviting community homeowners to come back into the schools, to embrace the diversity that's there, and to strengthen the schools so that the school, the community will be strengthened as well. I am, I can be the positive voice who can strengthen and encourage the community as a parent whose children have gone through the schools and as a member of the community that realizes I need to stay engaged after that point. I will be a positive voice. I will be the positive choice, your positive choice for school board, place seven, starting on April 28th.
Thank you. Dr. Kewin?
Thanks. Thanks so much for having us again this evening. Really appreciate you guys coming out and having the opportunity to address y'all, share a little bit more about my qualifications and background. When I think about the kind of people who get appointed to a Board of Directors in the private sector for a major corporation, it's people who have knowledge and expertise who can help grow your organization to the next level. Richardson ISD is a $280 million operation with, serving 38,000 students with 4,000 employees. And I think my unique qualifications make me the right person to lead on the Board of Trustees. I'm a parent. I have two kids in secondary programs right now, one at junior high and one at high school. That's a perspective that's currently lacking on our board that I'd be able to bring. I'm an education researcher with a doctorate in education policy, and I spend all day, every day trying to figure out what makes School A more effective than School B. And I'd be able to bring knowledge and insight, as well as my understanding of the relevant issues that we're facing in education today, back to serve our district. I'm a community leader. I've been actively involved as a PTA president in volunteering for our schools, as well as for my church and other organization voters for the last decade. And I have private sector experience. I've managed budgets of a similar size and scale in the financial services industry for the first seven years of my career. Folks in the community, former mayor Gary Slagle, councilman Steve Mitchell, Ron Hughes, Betty Stripling have recognized my qualifications and endorsed my campaign. I'll be able to make a contribution for my very first day of service on the Board of Trustees, and I ask for your vote, either early voting April 28th or on Election Day, May 10th.
Thank you. Okay, for place six, Ms. Chumney?
Thank you all so much for coming tonight, and thank you to the league and the council for hosting this event. We're so excited to be able to share our vision and our qualifications with voters. I know that I am the best candidate for place six. I have been highly engaged and involved with RISD. I serve on several committees and task forces. I'm very active in PTA in a number of capacities. I work, I'm on the council as a reflections chair, and I'm on the Sage Special and Gifted Education Committee. I'm also a, on the hospitality, I am the hospitality chair at my school PTA, and I'm on, inside RISD, leadership Richardson. I have a very deep knowledge of RISD and have a very broad vision. I want to make this school district a wonderful, it already is a wonderful school district, but make it the absolute best. We have such great resources. We are doing so many great things. We have the ability to take it to the next level, and I think I can get there, get us there. I'm enthusiastic, and I'm passionate about education. I'm passionate about our kids. I'm passionate about RISD, and I want to be a part of, of, of the system and make a positive impact on RISD, our children, our teachers, and our cities. And, you know, I want it to be a great place for people to, to come, to work, and to play, and to, to learn, and that when they leave, they leave as amazing citizens that are ready to, to be entrepreneurs and that are ready for their careers and their, or college, whichever path they choose. And I've had several people endorse me because they too believe that I'm the best candidate for place six, including Laura Masca, the mayor of Richardson, Steve Mitchell, and numerous others. Thank you so much again. I hope you will consider me for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Bono?
Thanks again for all of you being here tonight and for, for those that, the council PTAs and the legal women voters that put this together. You know, this is a very important job that requires, very important, a very serious job that requires someone with serious experience. We're at a interesting time in public education. We have a legislative... We have a legislature that tends to change the rules on us every two years. We have ongoing litigation relative to school finance. We have audits from a very, variety of programs that you heard about tonight that we need to dig into and implement. And, you know, we have 38,000 students, 55% of which are economically disadvantaged. Now, a lot of people look at that and say, "Wow, what a challenge that is." I look at it as a huge opportunity. We're sitting here right in the middle of North Dallas in the, literally the best economy in America, and I think that is a huge opportunity that requires real leadership to figure out how we harness that opportunity for each and every one of our students as they leave our doors. You heard a lot of us, you heard everybody on this panel tonight talk about how passionate they are about public education, but this is about more than passion. It's about who's the best leader to take us forward. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting from Texas A&amp;M, a master's in finance from Texas A&amp;M. I worked as a CPA right out of college and ever since then have held controller, vice president, CFO, and CEO roles of companies as large as a Fortune 500 company where, where I managed a budget almost identical to what RASD is today. There are, I have a significant number of endorsements, and everybody talks about all the endorsements I have, I have, or that they have. I have endorsements from state leaders on down, but the ones I'm most proud of are I have the endorsement and support of the overwhelming majority of former trustees that have served this district with their hard work for the last 10 or 15 years. I'd appreciate your vote on May 10th. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Let's give a big round of applause to these candidates.